Seventy.
I don't feel so bad at all.
No, I'll be starting to call tomorrow, so I'll leave your. Now that we've talked, it's okay.
Man, all of a sudden, I don't remember.
That happens.
No pressure. Did you see us wave at yet when we passed you the other morning?
Was that you?
With Brian that waved, I was driving.
Oh, okay. So often I see people right as they're going by and like, oh, who is that? So I didn't see.
You did a Redwood route now?
What's that? Yeah, yeah.
Me too, just about every day by ruse, you're on your way home.
Oh, sure. After today, I was, that's for sure. I can see packages in my sleep, it's crazy how that is, Mondays especially. But yeah, no, yeah, when you guys were going north, yeah, I was wondering, I, I, as you can see, I don't let speed very much. I did the front of the car would fall off, maybe.
The next day I stayed behind you, though, Brian wasn't with me. I always tease him about how slow he drives, so when I'm he's with, I have to make sure I speed it up a little.
Yeah, it's surprising, you know, some people really, nineteen's even worse, wow, they drive, and I got a lot of boxes on that. That's nerve wracking sitting along the edge of the road.
I can imagine.
I get, I put one wheel on the ditch a lot of times, just to let them go by, and then when it's safe, I pull out back out to the box.
Yeah, well, and this semi-traffic is so heavy.
Constant, yeah, just constant.
You got a river bottom up there? You don't like your old.
No, just, uh, every, from Redwood to pretty much to Walbass, so, but from Redwood to sixty-eight, and then a little bit over like towards Colony Road One, so drive-in theater road kind of that way. And a little bit north of nineteen, but not about a mile north of nineteen, so. It's a little bit bigger route.
You can start, it's being recorded, but I can't figure out how to put it on YouTube.
Not through there, through that setup. Are you recording it? What's it recording on?
All right, while you're working on that, we will call to order the Lamberton City Council regular meeting at City Hall for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. Uh, first thing is we've got additions or deletions to the agenda.
I'm going to add an RCA if it aligns with the building.
Anything else?
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, and then a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Consent agenda, we got approval of the minutes from the one thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four E D A meeting and the two twelve twenty-four regular city council meetings.
I'll make a motion if you can.
I'll second it.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Play opposed. General business. First thing we got, citizens' complaints or concerns, we had a letter from Katie's loss, everybody got a chance to read that. Is there anybody else here with comments or complaints or?
At last month's regular city council meeting, I read the following statement from this piece of paper. The Redwood County Sheriff told me he wants me to ask you a question, why are you not enforcing the ordinances? Directly after that, Councilwoman Bittner commented with emphasis on the word deputy. Councilwoman, it seems you believe I misspoke and should have said that I spoke with the deputy, not the sheriff, was that your point?
No, my point was is if someone other than yourself has a concern, I would like for them to come bring it to council instead of through a third party. If the law enforcement has a concern, my emphasis was is that I'd prefer, you know, it'd be good for them to come here and express concern.
You twice raised your voice on the word deputy, you said if the deputy has a concern, he should come here, and so we can talk to the deputy. So that's why I'm saying you emphasize the word deputy.
No, I just meant that if the deputy, the law enforcement, it's just the inflection of my voice, if he has a question or a concern, I gladly invite him to come to the meeting and ask us questions.
Or she.
Or she, thank you.
For clarity, was it a deputy or the sheriff?
I stand by my statement, I'm trying to get to the bottom of why uh, now in the minutes and you all have approved the minutes, you were, use the word deputy when I use the word sheriff. So did you come to that conclusion on your own, or did someone tell you that I spoke with the deputy?
You, you, we would just go by what you, well, I should let her talk for herself, but.
If I use deputy and you said sheriff, uh, was a complete misnomer, or you know, slip of the tongue, because I didn't, I just assume it's a deputy that comes out to the area, it's usually not always the sheriff that comes out to the area, so I just said deputy because typically that's what's in the area. I didn't really give it much more thought than that, it wasn't a concern of who came and spoke, it was that if somebody had the concern, I would prefer that they come and bring it to us. So I, to me, it had no difference bearing the name, like no difference, whether it was a sheriff or the deputy.
Anything else?
Yeah. Also Valerie said regarding her answer that I would, me, take it out of context. She said it all turned away from me and looking down at her desk, so I wasn't sure that I had heard her correctly and asked her if I did, I did. So Valerie, I'd like to hear from you, I don't understand that accusation, that I would take it out of context, can you help me understand that?
With the past conversations that I've had for you or with you in regards to different things.
And you're welcome to say anything, any specific that we've talked about.
I don't keep notes like you, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you, but I've had you take things out of context in the past, and therefore that's why I said that statement.
Okay, I don't believe I have, can you give us an example?
I cannot, because again, I don't give note, I don't take notes like you.
So that's, that's pretty important, though, you're a government official, this is a government record, and you're saying that I take things out of context, and you don't have anything to back it up.
Well, I could sit down and think about it, but.
I'd welcome that.
I can do that at some point in my day.
Okay, and when can we hear from you?
I have no idea, I don't know when that will take priority and when I will do that. Can I ask you why you need it?
Because you're a government official on government record saying that I take things out of context, and it's not true.
Wouldn't that be a matter of opinion either way?
You're the one who said it.
No, but you take something out of context, you might not think you are, but I might think you are. So just a matter of opinion.
It comes down to fact.
Well, this, this isn't the time or the place for an investigation, so if, if that's what you're looking for, you need to do it at a different time. Do you have any other concerns or complaints?
I would have you fill out a request for information. If, I, I mean, if we want to go the, the legal route and for the way the government's supposed to work and a request for information.
And that's on the Lamberton website?
I don't believe so, I'll have to find one.
Yes, one more thing, I've noticed several forums, new forums on the Lamberton website. How did those show up?
Uh, what new forums? I haven't uploaded anything new that I can think of.
Well, I was at a meeting when you were interviewing, uh, chief police chief candidate. And you mentioned that Chief Walker had gotten you up to speed on some forms and policies and ways of doing things. And um, so that's what I'm talking about.
The stuff on the police side of it, those are things that we need to have on our site by law, and he gave them to me to post.
Okay, when did you post those? I mean, was it in the minutes?
No, they went to bed in the minutes, it's just something we need to do.
Because just.
It's procedure.
Part of your daily job, right?
But it hadn't been done before, and I think the public would like to know, it's a good thing it's up there. And then those other complaint forms, there's, there's more up there than there used to be.
Is that under the police side as well?
I don't remember.
I can't, I.
It's not all of these on the police side, so I'd say no. It's, it's like in the area where you apply for a permit, et cetera.
As far as I know, they've always been there, I don't remember purposely putting them up there, we try to keep it up to date and have all the forms available.
All right. In general, is the council under the impression that it was the deputy who asked me to come here and ask why the ordinances weren't being enforced?
I have no idea who you spoke to.
Right, 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 other than you.
It was not my, I was not thinking deputy, I was not thinking sheriff, just because she said deputy, you said sheriff.
God, I didn't even.
So which, not at all, which one was it?
Hang on a second, Daryl?
No, which, which one was it? Was it the sheriff or was it the deputy? Because you're making a big deal about this, you just well tell us, tell us. And what, your statement was sheriff, then, so it was the sheriff. Okay, so which ordinance was the sheriff worried about?
Several, I didn't bring that list with me.
Well, I, I guess I'd like that list, because I want to know what he's talking about. And again, I suppose maybe I'll have to call him and ask him why he doesn't just voice these concerns with us instead of going through you, I don't understand how that's. Right, I, I don't. And again, I'll just give you the answer I gave you last month, is we're trying. Do we miss some? Yep. Does everything get enforced a hundred percent? Nope. But we're trying, so. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, Valerie, I mentioned to you that, um, Brian Kearns put up a deck behind his house, Justin helped him, did you do anything about that? Because he told me there was no permit for it.
Deck behind his house? I remember talking to you about the deck in front of his house, or the thing he put up for the puppy. I don't remember talking to you about the deck behind the house.
So that would be a no.
The deck behind the house, you're talking like a year ago? Two years ago?
Year ago.
That was replacing an existing deck that was there. He had taken it down sometime prior to that and replaced it with the one that is currently there. Which if that's correct, you would not need a building permit for that.
Okay.
If, if that's correct, so.
So I don't need a permit to replace the fence on my corner, the gray barber that has been vandalized so much that it's fallen down?
If, if you had a permit to put that fence in, and you want to re, and you want to replace that fence, you would not need uh, a permit.
It was there.
My understanding of this.
Yeah, as long as it's on the same footprint, it should be.
Yeah, as long as you don't do anything drastically different, like twice the size or or a different design type thing, you know, a different footprint, I guess is the best way than you wouldn't have.
Well, I had a Bolton Make survey done, and the footprint is off by zero to one and a half feet at the corner. Don't see a problem?
Especially if it's zero, I don't, so.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
And when did you get the building permit for that fence?
What fence?
The fence you're replacing, did you?
Didn't, it was there.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, as long as you're basically on the same footprint, it should be fine. All right, anybody else with comments or concerns? Okay.
It won't, it won't take long. No, council here, I moved here three and a half years ago from a long way away. I live on South, South Ramsey Street. Anyway, that you can help me to slow these high school students down, once they leave that high school, they are ripping and tearing and sliding and just loud mufflers. It's horrible. Is there anything that you can do to slow these young men down?
About the only thing we can do is try to have the, the police there at.
Would you do, do that, would you make that effort to have the police out there?
Yeah, we can certainly.
They are, I'm telling you, they're gonna hurt somebody out there, and it's been going on for two years now. I have met, you know, to that school, they basically say, oh shit, we, they're not under our control. Okay, but I'll tell you what, come down around where, you know, where I live at three o'clock, and you'll see what, what goes on there.
I know what you're talking about.
Where did you say that was?
At the hi- high school.
Okay.
I have a half, half blocks up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, on Ramsey Street, and I'm telling you what, these kids are gonna hurt someone. It's been going on and on and on, they don't have mufflers, they give me the finger. They don't, because he slowed down, and they go like this to me, you know what, if it doesn't stop, then I'm gonna take the next step, whatever that, that step is, so please, help me slow these young people down. Get the mufflers on these trucks, don't sit out there in that, in that parking lot and rev them things up. When, you know, when they leave, they, their gravel going everywhere, they're going stop signs, they're shooting Louis, and no one seems to really care. Okay, so that's one thing, you guys can help me out on that. I don't know you, you know, you, you, you folk at all, I don't know your names, I don't know where you guys live, you don't, don't know me. But there's one more thing that eats my craw. I got a nice house, I keep it nice, I keep it clean, taxes are paid, I keep everything mowed, everything trimmed up. When I look out my front, you know, window, all I see is a junk car across the road. That's been sitting there for two years. Nothing done about it, nothing, they sit there sinking in, in the damn ground, I walk out in, in my backyard, but, you know, look, look to my right, I see two junk cars sitting there. The license plates, the current tabs, and they're sitting there sinking in, you know? They draw on mice, they're drawing rats. Isn't there an, an ordinance in this town that you have to move these cars, or they have to work?
And be licensed, I don't know if any of those are on the.
Licensed, and that the next ordinance on our list to redo is the parking one.
Yeah.
And that's what I want to kind of address with that, because the difference between parking the car
Yes.
and storing the car.
Yes.
I think we need to be really clear and have definite.
Yes, I.
Ordnance as it stands now isn't as good as it should be.
I have looked up on, on the website, the ordinances in this town. And these, these vehicles there have to, if, they have to run, according to what I've read, they have to be moved supposedly after every forty-eight hours. They have to be able, you know, to move, and they say you just keep taking down lower and lower and lower, you know, in, you know, in the dirt. I didn't, I, I want to be able to go out in my backyard. And I keep my, my place nice and neat, but I don't want to look eighteen feet that way and see pieces of junk sitting there rusting away. Man, they got flat tires, and this and that, could you guys help me out on this? Or, you know, or, or, or not, as I read, if these cars do not run, they have to be put in a storage building. And nobody does anything. It just goes on and on and on. And I have drove, just got to, you know, to the point, and I'll make, I'll keep, keep this real, real short. If you drive up and down your alleyways in this town, everywhere you go, there's junk cars back there, there's tires that have stacked up here to the, you know, to the, you know, the ceilings, there's there's washers and dryers, there's freezers, laid out in back backyard. There's campers that have been in the backyard since I've been here that have never moved, that haven't been tidled, just twenty eighteen, sitting there. Just taking. Could you guys help me out on this crap? I, I don't mean to bitch, but I'm telling you what, guys, this town has to take a little bit of, of, of pride, you know? If, if, if some kid, some young kid, which is way out there, crawls in, in these cars, and slams the door shut, you'll never find them, if they crawl in these freezers behind these buildings, behind these homes, they'll never find it, it'll be two doggone late, there is, there is, there is chemical tanks back there in certain places. There is lawn mowers piled up eight, ten deep, tires stacked up, it goes on and on and on. I'm not too concerned about the rest of this town, but around where I live, I want this stuff taken care of. Because I pay, I support this town as much as I possibly can. I buy groceries here, I buy gas here, I bank here. And it just, it keeps getting worse, and I don't think that I should have to go outside my, my front door or look outside my, you know, and my, my, my window and see this junk just taking damn brown. Guys, drive through your alleyways once, and see what's going on back here. I'm not, I'm not, it's not your fault, but just take half power, it doesn't take, take long, and you'll see exactly what's going on behind these, these houses, and it's pretty horrible. You've got, you've got, look at, at, at your, at your schools, on the north side. Got a brand new school there. Drive past that school, and tell me what you, you see. You got pickup sitting there with no, with no no, eh, eh, gate out, no rear, no hood, no nothing, no doors, but the bare freight, no tires, and they're working on their trucks. I don't, I don't know, it might, it might be your, your truck, don't care. And there is nothing but oil cans laying out there, running down the damn sidewalk to your sewer. I guess that's all I'm, all I'm gonna say. But man, take a little time and cruise through the backyards of your town, and you tell me what you see, chemical tanks and appliances that junk lawn mowers piled up and things, you got bullets back there in these, behind these yards, old boats that haven't been licensed for god knows when, full of garbage bags. Pulled over, ripped open, you got cats ripping them things open, wind blows through here, through this town, there's shit flying everywhere. And I gotta pick that crap up. I'm, I'm no, no big, big deal here, guys, but please, try to help some of these people that do care about their homes and their things, please, take an effort. Springtime, you know, is gonna be, be, be here soon. With the add up, out, you know, in the paper saying, you gotta, you gotta pick this stuff up, man, you got to.
All right, that's right, we've heard, just so you know, we do do a spring cleanup day every year. We've made sweeps several times, so just hold on, we've made sweeps several times and did a nuisance ordinance several times. Well, I've been on here, I think, nine years now, and, and we've done it several times, and it, it again, we're, we're work on it, but we're not perfect either, so, but, but thank you.
Yeah, well, just don't blow, blow me off. Because if, if not, I'm telling you, guys, I'll go to the next step. And I'm not gonna live with these junk vehicles and this garbage that's blowing up and down these roads. I'm not gonna do it, I've got more, I can, I can go, you know, go to court, I can afford a man to sue people, whatever, I don't want to. But I, your, your response is exactly what I expected.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That we'd tell you, we tried to do something about it? You were expecting us to tell you we had tried to do something about it?
I expect you to, to get it done. And if not.
Easier said than done too, but we'll, we'll.
Have you, with these kids spinning around beans, we don't have a cop in town here, have you called like up to Redwood at all?
And not yet, but it's, it's the next step, I figured I would stop here first. And I stopped one of, of, of your cops here in, in town, some white haired dude, you know, old, you know, older dude, he says, yeah. He says, we'll try to keep, keep up on that, you know what, you guys don't have cops here, you know, I'd never see a cop. I don't like cops, but these kids are gonna hurt some, somebody.
I know they are.
And you got old folks coming from that old folks home with walkers and and chains and stuff, and these, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, man, these kids are gonna kill these, these people sometime.
Yeah, that's what I told the sheriff, I said somebody's gonna get killed.
And it's true, I see them, and I don't wanna, you know what? I didn't expect a whole lot here, but you better make an, an attempt.
When you call for the police, call Redwood County Dispatch. Don't call the phone number on the business card.
But.
Because they keep a record of it over there.
Every day, this shit goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, anybody else with concerns or complaints? All right, then we'll move on to building zone, zoning and permit requests. We got twenty twenty-four dash zero one, Randy and, yeah, the Thornton. So they must have went down on their.
Yeah, they changed their, their plan to be the fifty by thirty, like a twelve foot sidewall.
Yeah, I figured you signed off on it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
No, the motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Play opposed. Notice of truth and taxation hearing in Redwood Falls.
Seems pretty much the same time and location.
Okay, so for the, and this is where, so everybody knows that this is where uh, you go if you are concerned or don't believe your valuation of your property is correct. This is where you go and they try to reevaluate it, and it is April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from ten thirty A M. to eleven A M. at the meeting room at the Government Center in Redwood Falls. So if you think your tax valuation is too high, Then you go there and they will. You can appeal it there. All right, then we've got. The two twen- two thousand twenty three audit presentation, but we don't, we just have the draft, right?
Yeah, this is just a draft, but nothing will really change, so she sent. Video for you to watch.
Hey, everyone, I'm Dr. Nelson, and I'm the board of the city of Redwood Falls, twenty twenty three, very interesting on it today tonight. So we're gonna go over your audit lists, your general fund, the other government funds, enterprise funds, and to the keeper funds indicators. I did just wanna let you know that audit hasn't been finalized yet, as we are still waiting on some pension numbers. In order to adjust that liability, it makes sense, probably that will not change anything that you're going to see tonight. As a reminder, as authors, we are engaged to opine on your financial statements, on whether or not they're free from material statements. We do this through a series of testing, whether it be looking at invoices, getting confirmation from your bank, talking with employees. May anything that we do, we certainly can fill out an opinion. Like yours passed into our cash basis, we do have to issue an adverse opinion under GAAP and a qualified opinion under the regulatory basis of accounting. Along with our regular audit testing, we are also required to do testing on Minnesota legal compliance. Some examples of this include making sure you have sufficient power with your base, you're following contracting and bidding rules, that procedures, et cetera. And we do have one instance of noncompliance this year. Moving on to joint committee audit, the first two are very common for cities your size, and you have had them in years past, so you should look familiar. The first one is saying that we help prepare those financial statements. Second one, limited segregation duties, you do only have the two employees in the office. And then third material audit adjustments, just stating that we help prepare so you may see an adjustment for the financial statements. Lastly, we have contracting and bidding, this is your legal compliance signing, uh, you did not attempt to obtain two merk quotes for that cloud truck purchase, which prompted this signing. We do have one recommendation for you, and that is to increase the capital asset threshold, your current threshold is a thousand. And we would have you consider increasing that to five thousand, just with all of the inflation around the world, uh, it's really hard to find things under that a thousand dollars. So you will end up capitalizing more with that lower threshold, and that is why we would consider moving you up to the five thousand. Going along into a general fund here, this first chart is gonna show you your unassigned fund balance compared to next year's budget. And that fund balance policy of your fifty percent of next year's budget, so as you can see, your study done about that in the past three years have been steadily increasing. Digging a little bit deeper here into your general fund budget threshold. So receipts came in over budget by about three hundred sixty five thousand. Two main contributors here, your property taxes were over budget by about seventy thousand. And then your refunds and reimbursement were over by about ninety four thousand, and that's gonna be due to those insurance claims on your loader and tractor. Disbursements came in under budget by about thirty six thousand. Administration, finance, personal services were under budget by about twenty three thousand, because this is just due to the gap of those fees. During the time when they left and you retired. And then capital outlay was also over budget by about fifty eight thousand due to that purchase of the cloud truck. So overall, you had a net change in your cash fund balance of an increase of about two hundred thousand. Looking at that revenue from the revenue today, you had an increase due to any transfers in the project in the more. And an intergovernmental increase due to less one time grants, that's zero as you had U S D grants in the prior year, otherwise you've been very consistent. The year's managers, couple of variants is here, your public works had to be increasing repairs and contracting services this year. And then your miscellaneous had some more clinic and communities, community center expenses in the year. And then you've had some less capital purchases during the year. Looking at your cash flow, you're sitting at that high two million mark, two oh three million mark. Very healthy cash reserves, um, and then a little bit of a decrease, this year was dispending down those funds spent by businesses. Moving along to special revenue fund balances, this is gonna be your E D A, the small cities development grant funds. And really the difference between this and just spending down that restricted balance and then going into that aside fund balance. Total fund balance only decreased about two thousand. Your capital project fund balances, um, so this year you only have that four key from your fund open. And your private fund deposits and those funds have seemed to have been spent, that's why you don't see any restricted amount there just described. Then your governmental debt service fund, that chart is gonna show you your governmental fund. Um, debt outstanding, your maturity, and then the bottoms in your next ten years of debt service payments. So you do see that little bit of a dip after twenty twenty six, as at twenty nineteen, the refunding bond matures. Moving into enterprise funds here, the next couple of signs are gonna look kind of the same, uh, this first chart is kinda showing you. Uh, what's coming in, this is what's going out, with the left side, the operating receipts, and right side, the operating persons and debt payments. So as an enterprise fund, who wanna see that making money, who would love to see that left side higher than the right side. So you have consistent movement, you will not do that again, a little bit of decrease. In like that this year, probably just due to an increase in costs, uh, as we've seen that kind of around inflation. And then that bottom graph is gonna show you more cash balance with a target balance of fifty percent of operating costs. Less next year's debt service payments, um, so as you can see, steadily increasing that cash reserve and well above that target balance. Moving on, a little bit of a different story, as your operating receipts, um, have historically been a little bit lower than what's going out, uh, you see, you kind of broke even right there. Um, and then if we look at our cash flow, things we are currently steadily decreasing down. Uh, this is, this, this is a situation where you may want to think about increasing rates, um, so you're getting those revenues to cover those expenses. You will have debt jumping up in twenty twenty six, uh, for that twenty nineteen funding bond, that is around eighteen thousand in payments each year, which will obviously help. When the country comes. For sure, I'm sure it's been doing very well, it's just covering those expenses and that payment. Um, so as long as those operating expenses don't get too high, we could be okay here. And then also, I think a lot of cash balances, very consistently, building those cash reserves. And just barely under that target balance, so for next year, we can see that the order that's a target balance. I think it's been doing very well, consistently covering those discounts. And very steadily building that cash reserve once again, and well above that target balance. Moving along to some key performance indicators, uh, just making up that we do not make much of a statement yet, um, we can't make any to your peers in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So we'll start off with taxes, we have your tax rate and taxes per capita here. So we start with, you have a little bit higher than your peers in these rates. Um, however, I think, the main thing is you stay pretty consistent here, there's not, um, too sharp increases, your tax rate has been very, very steady, so. I think that's what your community is gonna wanna see there. And then moving on to debt, so we have your debt pressure down. Constantly decreasing, uh, down towards your peers, which is gonna see, and then we have your debt service expenditures as a percent of total expenditures. Um, so decreasing down a little bit this year, I will say you did have, um, kind of an increase in expenditures with that bullet project. Um, so your current year debt expenses only decreased about two thousand, um. So we took out multiple expenses, it probably wouldn't decrease as much as you're seeing here. And then looking at expenditures, uh, current expenditures per capita. Um, have been increased a little bit, I think, once we get your peers data, we are also going to see that same trend, once again, that inflation that we've seen. Throughout the past couple of years, um, everyone's kind of been driven upwards. And then capital expenditures per capita really depends on the needs of your cities, obviously, you're hiding all its expenses, driving you up a little bit. Thanks, okay, well, that's all I have for you guys today, um, please feel free to reach out to me with any questions, um, like, you know, it's on the screen here, otherwise it's no doubt, we doubt you as well. Okay, thank you.
So we did, you know, raise our rates. This last year for the storm around sewer, um, so that. I guess I look at that, I may look at those numbers and those graphs, I think, well, next year, you know, I kind of thought that every three years, you know, we'd kind of go around in a circle and raise something. But I think I would work more on just raising storms or or regular sewer again next year, just. In that touch water, just to kind of try to get that fund moving a little quicker upwards, just because it is behind what they like to see, but. That would just be my thought on that. Otherwise, I think we're doing okay.
All right. Don't need to do nothing on that.
No, we can't, nothing until it's finalized, so we won't do anything with that now.
Okay, then we've got requests for council action, the. Current building site for schoolwork session.
We got the I S G report back, and unfortunately, it's just a sad state of affairs. Um, if we were to keep the current school building now as it stands, about sixteen million dollars to do so. Um. If any of you want to.
Not as, just hold, the way you said that was if we keep it currently as it stands.
Yeah, we would take down the three story portion of the building and keep the two buildings as two standalone buildings. Um. It'd be sixteen million, that.
And have them updated and all the things.
Right, just, yeah. And that necessarily, it doesn't necessarily. Include. The interiors being redesigned or fixed to what we need it to be, it's just to make them two standalone buildings. So that's kind of a gut hurt, um, if anybody wants to have a meeting with I S G to explain these numbers. I guess I'm gonna have one with them, so if anybody wants to come along or, you know, be in on it, I just wanna understand a little bit. And, um. Yeah, that's about it on that, so now it becomes, we need to have a work session with the school, or the E D A needs to have a work session with the school. To start the conversation of what do we do with this site. Um, we'll set up a work session for next Monday night with the school board and the E E D A board. But we will also invite you as a council, it will be an open meeting, um. But then that way, if you guys wanna come and listen to the the beginning of the conversations of how this is gonna progress. That's what we're doing, or that's what we need to approve, that we have this meeting. Right, so.
I make a motion with their approval. I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? Five o'clock at the school, right?
Yeah.
The council or.
At their boardroom?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries, and just for general information, a work session basically means that we can meet. And we can talk about virtually anything, but there will be no voting on anything that night. So, I mean, anything that would be come up from it, or whatever, would have to be brought back to a regular council meeting. And introduced to to get a vote. So.
I'm actually gonna be out of town next week, so I won't be around, I'll be there.
Okay, and then I guess B is the same as A. On my list here.
Yeah. We got that, so then we've got the R C A for the Lamerton Meats Building.
Um, let's do a council work session.
I thought we just did.
No, that's the work.
No, that's the work session with the school.
All you wanna do other.
Yeah, I wanna do just us.
Do you know, we're meeting with I S Gs?
No, I haven't set it up, so would you like to be a part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, what time is work best for you, like during the day?
I, anytime after Friday, I can make it work. This week is a little.
And then you're usually like Tuesday, a little bit more flexible?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep, Tuesdays, I'm very flexible.
She's looking at April, so.
You said April.
Yeah, April, one, two.
Kind of the Monday, Tuesdays of the month, um.
Yeah, any of those dates, I guess, would really work for me.
Is there anyone's that you guys know don't work?
Nope, nope.
I haven't, I didn't look at the school schedule, I didn't.
There's no school Monday, the first.
The first, there's no school, because it's after Easter.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe you wanna be away from the kids by that point in the day.
That's not an official holiday, right, the Monday?
No, no, it's not.
The Friday isn't always anymore either.
So, yeah, if you wanna do, should we shoot for the first, just because we know there's no school and shouldn't be any activities that.
Right.
Bother us, sooner we get it done than it went, if spring gets into going where we're done. So five or five thirty work for everyone.
I'm fine with either.
Me too.
Okay. Um, what would you like to discuss?
Well, I see you have some suggestions here.
I do, I'd like to go, you know, parking was the one that we were supposed to get done before and hasn't gotten done, so I'd like to. Do the parking ordinance, um. I wanna talk about developmental changes, um, we've run into a little of a glitch with the. Our general building and easements and things, and there's just. I don't know a whole lot about, you know, the developmental side and what we should have in place, but we need to decide. Um, that kind of stuff that we need, need to look at and look at changing. For that, and then I would just, after today now, I would just like to talk about ordinances in general as far as enforcement and. Any ideas or suggestions.
Yeah, I think it's getting to where I think we're gonna have to step up and be revising. More, more often.
Well, and, uh, you know, I I realize that we wanna totally rewrite these at some point. But it almost seems to me that we should take the ordinance as we have right now, and we should just make some changes to those that we want changed. And adopt them, and if we wanna rewrite them, because apparently. I mean, Matt's a busy guy, too, and if it's gonna take him six or eight months to go through a ordinance before he gets it back to us. It's gonna take forever to go through these, so. It's more to me of take what we have and either add or subtract something and just adopt.
Just to get them implemented quicker.
So that things get moving. And again, is it the perfect way? No, but it would, it would get them moving anyway, so.
And I guess to me. Ordinance enforcement. Is what I'm gonna put down here.
Well, that's the other thing, is we've got to come up with a way to enforce these, and. I have a couple of ideas that we can discuss on that meeting, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
Mm-hmm.
Always our struggle.
Do we need to revisit, heck, I don't remember if we did years ago or not, but the nuisance one, like, does that need revisited?
Uh, I think in general it does, yes, but, um.
It's not the worst.
Okay.
It it doesn't necessarily help to. To revisit that one if there i- isn't a hundred percent enforcement of what we already have either, so. That's.
If what we have isn't. That's what we have and then. Realistically enforceable.
Well, and they're realistically enforceable. It's just, we don't have the manpower. It's not my priority, um. Yeah, if you want it to be my priority, you need to tell me. But then that means other stuff doesn't get done. That's just life.
So, yeah, let's just basically leave it as ordinance. In general, on the whole work session thing.
Hmm, is there anything else?
Is there anything we need to discuss with pool coming up around the corner?
Not really. I mean, I got one application, so we'll have to do that, um.
You've only received one, okay. That, you're in there, sorry. Off topic.
But I don't know, I don't know that we have any pools. I mean, we don't know yet.
Yeah, as far as the operations side. I don't see any major thing, I guess.
I mean, winter was good to us, so we're hoping it was good to the pool, but. We won't know until you get in there.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion for that?
A motion.
Work session, uh, April first.
Let's keep five o'clock if that works.
Okay.
They're all seconded. Right?
Yep, yep.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we've got RCA for Lamberton Meats Building.
I received this email this afternoon. Um. Yeah, I don't know. I guess my biggest thing on, on this one is do you want to do a lean search? Before we say we're gonna take it back? Or what, what do you feel? You want to take it back? What do you, you know, what do you want to do?
Maybe this should be discussed at our. Meeting. I don't know.
Could we have this go to the E D A and maybe at the next E D A meeting? Try to get a walkthrough of that thing?
You can try, yeah.
And then the E D A can bring a recommendation back. Last Wednesday of the month.
March twenty seven.
All right, so we don't need to do anything else on that then for now?
No, no, if that's what you want to do, that's fine.
I think that's the best to just refer it there and have them come back.
How much is a title search?
I think it's probably towards five hundred.
Okay.
I think it depends on how deep you'd have to go. And I don't know that you'd have to go that deep, but. Yeah.
Okay.
And it would just be over the last year. It wouldn't be like, it's like old, old records, you know?
Okay, department reports, library.
I really don't have anything for you guys. I've missed the last several meetings, so I figured I'd come for questions, comments, concerns.
I think the Taylor Swift thing went over really well.
Yeah, I really enjoyed that.
That was.
So cute.
They loved it. I have several videos of them singing, but there's copyright issues, so I can't actually upload them, but.
Right.
It was, the kids had a blast with that one.
Yes, they did.
No, I think doing the movies on those early out is such a great idea. I mean, and that's got, it has, has to have have increased attendance to the movies.
Oh, yes.
I mean, I don't even personally, for me, I think it's great. I mean. It helps fill in that gap of the two hours or so in there.
Yeah, well, and it's perfect right before, or they get done with school, they come up to me and then they head over to dance. So it just kind of makes sense to me.
No, that's, that was great planning. I really, really liked that. And I see you want to work on getting, um, subscriber. What's the word? Circulation up?
Yep. We've done really well, um. For January and February this year, we actually have summer numbers. So we're really excited, but I think that comes from doing the winter reading program with the kids. It's always just been for the adults, but. Why not give something else a try? Kids seem to love it, so.
It's good.
All right, anything else? You want to make a motion to?
No, second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Ambulance.
No, we're working on changing the filling company. That has come with some pickups and downs because you have a lot of these symptoms and. Well, apparently, we, nobody's been on them for a while, so then all of a sudden you're revalidating stuff and, uh. It's just a headache. And then, um, because of all this, we've gotten notified that we're gonna get a Medicare site visit. Because our old site address wasn't even this address. It was something, I don't know if it, it almost seems like it was next door here, and I changed it to Douglas Street. So we're getting a Medicare site visit. Make sure it's an ambulance service, whatever.
Goes to show they haven't been out in a long, long, long time, so, I mean. We're doing stuff the way we're supposed to. It shouldn't be an issue.
Right, right. It's just. That was just what we were gonna, to mention on the ambulance side.
So, do we want to approve that as an import or report or just move on? Fire Department, Police Department. Maintenance Department.
I don't have a whole lot for you guys. We've been working on. One issue we did have on the last snow that we had. We had a big breakdown on the plow truck. Some bolts snapped on Grove Street, the plow sank into the crappy street. And snapped the bolts off and the plow ended up on top of the wing. But we've gotten that all fixed back to it. And actually, tomorrow we should have it done, so it'd have, and then everything made. So that's going, um, otherwise we've been. We built six more Christmas decorations for the. The light poles out here, so we can get rid of them, old antique heavy ones. I believe the commercial club is kicking in some money. To pay for that, so that's a good thing. Um, we started leveling dirt down in Kohar today. We're gonna keep going on that. And then from there, we'll move up here to the city park, but. I had dirt available down there and I can't get any of the city part for a while here yet, so we started down there. Uh, we're gonna start working on the way it looks. Sweep in the streets, so. We might as well get that done. But otherwise.
If we get more snow, I was thinking about this the other day, if we get more snow. It really shouldn't matter on the street sweeping, because it's kind of like a lot of the, the fall stuff, or you know.
The only way you're gonna get more is on the county roads when they sand.
Yeah, okay.
But either way, you have to pick it up anyway, so.
Right.
Anyway, otherwise, unless you guys have anything else, I don't have a whole lot. This time.
And you mentioned swimming pool. Been out there taking a look or?
We've looked at it, yeah, I mean, everything. Well, no, it's not, it's all, it's clean and. You know, the water's dark, so we can't see down in there, but. The weather's nice. I don't think we really want to pay to run, pump, circulate water for two months, so. We'll try to get everything else done and we can just focus on that. And not have to get everything done at one time, so.
All right, anything else?
Are we gonna get the dock up at Kohar this year?
I don't know where we're gonna put it.
I don't know.
I don't know where we can put it because they put them rifles in, and that's where the landing is right there. So it's, there's like, there's no water right there. I can put it in there, yeah.
Well, I just think that it needs to be used.
Oh, I can shove it in there. That's not a problem.
Is there a different spot along? Around the way that it could be installed or no?
Well, you kind of got to put it where the. The landing is so you can drive down here to put it in, otherwise it'll be. There's cement down in the river. Yeah, we can throw it in there.
I've just had a couple people ask about it.
Oh, yeah, no, I, so do I. I've had people asking why we don't have the back open. There's no fishing season or anything like that open right now.
Right.
Right.
We don't need them back there tearing it up full on, so that's why it's locked.
And I think that's right for this time of the year.
But, I mean, we'll open it up here eventually, so we're gonna start taking them stumps out back there, but. That's back for stuff, so. Yes, we will, we'll put a line together to get the dock in.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
Okay, anything else? Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion accepted. Administration E D A.
So we've been working on this and that, the other thing, um, ambulance billing, presidential primary election. Um, I did do a Brownsville webinar again. I think there's some things we can investigate for the school site. Um, working on childcare. Uh, the easement with Dollar General hiccup. Um, I have a meeting set with a twin home developer for this Wednesday. Took vacation. Uh, and then the day on the Capo Hill, which. That's the information I kind of gave you in here. I met it with, um, Representative Torkinson, went over kind of the talking points and then. Um. Thank you for the support and introducing our bill. I think I put that on there. The bill's been introduced in the House and Senate. The bill for, um, the correct, or the bill for asking for money for Lamperton for. Well, that also works into the industrial park. Um, so the legislative priorities for the league of Minnesota cities, that's on that one. They talked about a lot of it. Um, the EMS stuff is. Is working to the forefront, um. Representative Torkelson did state, say. If there is any. More money to be spent, his priority is the EMS. Um, now during the meetings, they had the House, um. Majority Leader come in and they talked about the fact that, yes, there is a bigger surplus than they originally anticipated, but. They say their fancy word for deficit. Um, they know they're, they're heading into deficit after this, so they know that they have to keep some of that money, so they're not looking to spend what you're seeing in the news. Um, as the surplus, because they know they're gonna need some of that money back, so. Um, if they do spend extra money. Um, they felt it would be a mess. They did state that on their bonding, the stuff that we're in on or asking for. Um, they are focused on more water projects because they want every, make sure everybody has, um, clean, safe water and water sources. Um. Yeah, and they just, I just put in the fact sheets for the bills that they're looking at, just so that you guys. Have some. Understanding of what they're doing. Um. We had a meeting this morning with a representative for Senator Fishbach. To go over the congressional ask. That window has not been opened yet, so it hasn't, for the federal ask, it hasn't happened yet because there's still, um. That in doing their budget for twenty twenty two, so they don't know what money they have, so we can't open.
All right, anything else? Anybody got any questions? Do you want to make any mention? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries, report accepted. Ordinances and resolutions. Got twenty twenty four dash zero four, accepting donations. We got one donation from. Redwood West Side Center for the library for seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then, uh, February twenty twenty three financial report and the approval of claims.
Make a motion to approve those.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Mayor and council reports and communications. Um, information for councils, three days for twenty twenty four. There's a new from the state. Looks like we get what, thirty one hundred or something?
Thirty two hundred dollars. Definitely figures that will be about what it costs to cover the whole by where the water break was this year, so.
And then it should all just go to patching.
Yeah, absolutely, right, yeah. Catching the one spot.
It's, it's at least something, it's more than we've gotten before, but it's really. Doesn't go far. But, um, one thing that just just popped into my head on the work section, can we add? Um. Please. What we have to do to change here.
I don't think on a work session that. That certainly matters.
Official, isn't it?
Right, because you can't vote on anything anyway, so.
Okay, so you're seeing all that, please. So other than that, that's.
And next meeting date is actually now. Work session next week at the school and then. Work session on April first, and then our actual next meeting date for council is April eighth, two thousand twenty four. Anybody have anything else?
I was just gonna say, I'm, you know, we, we do a lot of those, uh, those. Ordinances, whatever. We can almost kind of come up, I know some of them are old and antiques and whatever, but I would almost think that we could kind of come up with some old words. That simplify them enough that, that everybody understands them and, you know, then it just. Approve it that way. I mean, before we have to rewrite them all or whatever. I realize that has to be done. At least to simplify it for now, so maybe put some action towards. You know, pushing some of the stuff through. I don't understand, this is like, I guess, the simpler the better, you know, it's a lot easier.
And that's one of the biggest problems I have with ordinances now is just that. Organization of them and finding them, so.
And add them.
Here and some's there and, and that's my hardest part. It's like, oh, well, that was from the original ones that are like newspaper written, well. You know, it just makes it hard. So that was part of the goal of the organize, or, you know, get them organized so that we know what they all are.
Yep. And just, you know, some of the more, the ones that we use more often, just. Simplify them and take out the where as and who as and the, all that type of stuff, but just put it in plain English, I guess.
Yeah.
It would probably simplify it for everybody, especially when they're looking them up and then reading them, in- interpretations, especially from something that's written fifty years ago.
Yeah, well, and that's just it, those ones, the beginning ones, there's so much of that that's so outdated.
Yep, yep.
It doesn't, you know, it doesn't pertain to anything, but they're still on the books, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty, somebody want to move for a drum?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.